Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation flower.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Alan?
Here.
Green?
Here.
LaFleur?
Here.
Ms. Stravich?
Here.
Rhindell?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. Approval of minutes for the quarterly roundtable of October fifteenth would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
What's been made and supported, is there any discussion? Be it not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have the regular meeting minutes of the same date, October fifteenth. Is there a motion for those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
What's been made and supported, is there any discussion on those? Be it not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda item. If anybody's here that would like to speak to the city council, we will move on. Adoption of the agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
I do have one change. I would ask that council remove item number two. Little miscommunication, care will be at our next meeting on November nineteenth.
Okay. City Council, any changes? A motion to accept the agenda as amended would be in order?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion? Be it not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
What's been made and supported, there's no discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration, which we have five this evening on the amended agenda. The first one being consideration of audit presentation. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to receive a presentation from the city auditors, Plant Moran, on the fiscal year 2017-18 audit. You'll see from their presentation that we are maintaining a solid financial position, and Keith, Dave, and Dan are here tonight to present that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Dave Harrington, with Mayor Keith Schmansky and Dan Hart, and we're here to present the audit and provide you with a little bit of audience for part of the evening. But I get the privilege of presenting the audit opinion for the June thirty, 2018 City of Richmond audit, and again, it's the best opinion you can get. It's called a non-modified opinion. And in general, just to tell you just how great it is to work with your staff, they're extremely talented and incredibly professional, and they reach out to us routinely to make sure, is this the best practice? Is this the right thing to do? And so, in lieu of going through the whole audit, Dan and Keith will present some highlights of the audit results, and if you have any questions throughout the presentation or at the end, feel free to ask, and we'd, that's why we're here. And we'll kick it off with Dan.
Thank you. First, I'll direct your attention to the graph presentation that we have, just to highlight a few of the financials for the city this year. The first graph is a five-year history of the general fund revenue. In total, general fund revenues rose again by four percent from 2017 to 2018. Property taxes continue to be the largest revenue source and represent sixty-four percent. State shared revenue is number two. Taxable values are continuing to head in the right direction. It's the third increase, albeit small. However, taxable values have not yet reached what they once were in twenty, or 2008 and 2009. In total, other revenue sources did slightly increase as well from 2017 to 2018. The next graph is a five-year history of the general fund expenditures. While revenues also increased slightly, expenditures did too by seven and a half percent. Those are spread primarily across various categories and are attributable to wages and capital outlay expenditures. As is common for a city of this size, public safety is still the largest category and represents forty-four percent of your total general fund expenditures. On the next graph, this represents a five-year history of the general fund fund balance. With revenues exceeding expenditures this year, the city was able to add fund balance of approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-seven grand in 2018. Currently, all the fund balance, or the majority, is unassigned, meaning it's available for potential uses, which puts the city in great financial position for any unforeseen economic circumstances, emergencies, or future capital projects. Credit to the city for keeping an eye on the budget throughout the year and maintaining a strong fund balance in challenging times. The budgeted use of fund balance in 2019 is approximately four-hundred-and-eight-thousand. However, this is subject to change based on actual performance over the next year. The next graph will move on to the water and sewer fund performance. Similarly, this is a five-year history, and there's primarily two measures we'd like to point out in this graph. First is working capital, which is current assets minus current liabilities, representing the available resources for day-to-day operations. And also operating income, which are essentially the operating results for each year. This is calculated as the user fees minus the cost of operations, including depreciation. If I can direct your attention to the sewer fund, you'll see that there was a very small operating loss during the year. However, that does include three-hundred-and-sixty-nine grand of depreciation expense, and working capital also decreased slightly, however, it still remains very healthy. The water fund had opposite results, a small operating income, and it increased to working capital. The real takeaway here is that both funds are in a very strong financial position. They continue to be able to fund current operations on an annual basis, along with providing for capital projects that need to be incurred without incurring any additional debt. I'll pass on to Keith to cover our audit letter.
Good evening. Briefly going to review the short, seven-page letter on Plant Moran letterhead addressed to the mayor and city council. One thing that's not included in this letter is a section on any internal control findings we had. There were none this year, so we found the internal controls that are in place to be appropriate and operating effectively. We also did not identify any significant journal entries as part of our audit. So that section of the letter which has been included in the past is not included at all this year. So, section one in this year's letter is the required communications under the auditing standards. As Dave mentioned, you got an unmodified audit opinion this year, and this letter really tells council and those charged with governance how easy it was to achieve that. And the good news here is that it was extremely easy to give that clean audit opinion. We have no disagreements with management, no significant issues that we need to bring to your attention. The only things I will highlight are, towards the bottom of page two, there was a change in accounting effective for the city this year. Gatsby Statement Number Seventy-Five related to retiree health care. For the first time, the city was required to obtain an actuarial evaluation to measure the cost of providing retiree health care to retirees. But because of the provisions of the plan, it really is a very small liability. People that are eligible for it can only receive it between their retirement date and when they turn sixty-five and become Medicare eligible. So it really is a small window under which the city could be liable for those retiree health care costs. And as a result, the measure for current retirees and a projection for future retirees was about three-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, total liability for anyone who could be eligible at this time. So while this is an extremely significant liability that's having a major impact on most local units' financial statements, that really isn't the case for Richmond. It's almost a non-issue at about three-hundred-thousand dollars compared to your operating budget. The city's policy to date has just been able to, has been to fund that on a pay-as-you-go basis. As people retire and are eligible for the benefits, the city simply pays those premiums out of the general fund. And given the small size of that liability, that's an entirely appropriate policy to have. At the top of page three, we point out a couple significant accounting estimates that are included in the financial statements. Those are the total OPEB liability that I just described as being new this year, as well as the estimate for future installment payments to Lennox Township under the annexation agreement. But other than that, as I mentioned, there were no difficulties encountered during the audit, no disagreements with management, nothing significant that we need to bring to your attention. The second section of this letter is purely informational, includes some legislative and informational items, including some commentary on revenue sharing for the state's 2019 budget. Message there is to simply remain conservative and understand that what the state projects to be able to distribute to local units is contingent on the sales tax revenues coming in. Then other than that, we just have a small section on proposed legislation, mostly related to legacy cost reporting, which we've discussed with John and Angel, and they've got it well under control. So with that, we'll take any questions you have related to anything in the audit reports.
Council have any questions? Sounds like another great job by our treasurer, city staff. Of course, we appreciate the job that you guys do every year for us.
Thank you. We appreciate it, and this is great community. You're doing the right things in the right way, so well done.
Thank you.
I'm all set.
Is there a motion?
Yep. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments anybody have for Plant Moran? If not, motion be in order.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the City of Richmond, June thirtieth, 2018 financial report with supplemental information from Plant Moran LP.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any other discussion? Any audience comments from our treasurer? Anybody, any of the department directors we have here this evening don't have anything to say either, right? Because she holds the strings, right? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Again, thank you very much. Item number three on the amended agenda is consideration of the introduction first reading of ordinance number one-five-six dash two-three, location of air conditioning units and generators. Excuse me, Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to introduce and give first reading to ordinance one-fifty-six dash twenty-five, which will amend section five-point-two-oh-five, permitted yard encroachments of the zoning ordinance to allow air conditioners and generator units within the non-required side yard area. The item was brought to both this board and the planning commission based on administration's recommendation that this section of our zoning ordinance is very difficult to enforce, and in fact, there's many, many of the newer areas of town that the air conditionings and air conditioners and generators are in the non-required side yard setbacks. We're actually kind of making our ordinance kind of meet what's actually happening out in the real world. It was brought to our attention by an honest person who was putting in one of these units in their yard, and we realized, oh, well, this is, our ordinance isn't saying what we thought it was, and so we're correcting that. Again, it will not be allowed up against somebody else's property. It's only allowed in the non-required side yard setback. This was approved by the planning commission at their October meeting with the recommendation that council approve this tax amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. For clarification before a motion, the recommended motion, I'm not sure if this needs to be corrected, but the last two sentences there, the last two lines, to allow air conditioning generator units within the non-required side yard area, or should it read the entire non-required rear yard area? Because can you put it in the rear yard?
As of right now, there are no restrictions.
Whatsoever.
In the rear yard at all.
Yeah, okay.
So it could go, I mean, we can certainly, if it's the city council's purview, you can certainly change that.
Do you see it as an issue? I didn't bring it up at planning commission because I didn't even see that.
Yeah, the required rear yard is thirty-five feet in most residential districts. I do believe that might be a little onerous to not allow like a propane tank or something within the rear thirty-five feet of their property.
Yeah, okay, okay. Very good. Then is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to introduce and give first reading ordinance one-five-six dash two-five, which will amend section two-point-two-zero-five, permitted yard encroachments to allow air conditioner and generator units within the non-required side yard area or the entire rear yard area.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion? This is just the first reading. We'll have a second reading before adoption. Any comments from the audience? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four on the amended agenda is consideration of the eight-hundred megahertz radios for the police department. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving the purchase or lease of twenty-six radios for the police department, twenty prep and six for the cars. The Richmond Police Department currently has thirty-four radios, six car radios and two consoles. All eight-hundred megahertz radios were purchased when the county went over to the eight-hundred megahertz system, and knowing that many of these radios throughout the county, not just in the city of Richmond, were going to be kind of becoming obsolete about the same time, Macomb County Emergency Management Director Vicki Wilber approached Motorola about trying to get better pricing for those communities that lie within Macomb County. Macomb County is also purchasing a large amount of radios from Motorola at this time. As we mentioned at the last quarterly roundtable, there's some pricing that's been made available to the city of Richmond through December fifteenth that would allow us to kind of jump on the prices that Motorola gave to Macomb County. With that, council asked us to kind of take a look at option one, which was purchasing under the county bid, which was seventy-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars, or the five-year lease option, which would then, I think, take the total price up to ninety-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight. So at the time, also council directed us to kind of do a review of our current fund balance levels, which I did under the financial impact section of the background brief here. Administration is very comfortable with being able to handle the purchase price under option one, which ultimately brings down the price of the radios the lowest that we can. Again, for a number of reasons, the police were looking to stay with Motorola radios at this time, so we do have a roll call motion here if you choose to go with the purchase.
Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to waive purchasing ordinance requirements under the section six-four dash five-three and authorize city manager to sign a purchase agreement with Motorola for twenty preps and six car radios in the amount of seventy-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Discussion, which we had quite a bit at, as the city manager noted, we had quite a bit of discussion at our roundtable workshop meeting. And I think it's pretty obvious, unless we want to spend eighteen thousand dollars in interest over five years, we're getting a better deal than even the state came up with, which usually the state does pretty well in their bids. But that undercuts that by quite a bit of money also. Wasn't it like somewhere in neighborhood, was the state's bid somewhere around ninety, yeah, ninety-one thousand?
No, one-hundred-and-fourteen was the state.
Oh, yeah? Okay.
Yeah, I think there's a typo in my background brief here before you tonight. I think it's one-hundred-and-fourteen, but your background brief does say ninety-one. Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor.
That's fine. So you're talking forty-one thousand dollars difference in the same radio, price of the same radio. So I think it's a no-brainer, but any other comments on this? Any audience participation on this, or chief, anything else? Okay. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying, I'm sorry, roll call.
Green? Yes. LaFleur?
Yes.
Ms. Stravich?
Yes.
Rhindell?
Yep.
Ricks?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, thanks for all the background information that we requested from the workshop. Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Okay, item number five on the amended agenda is consideration of bid award winter maintenance. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider awarding the winter maintenance contract for the city offices here. Bids were solicited on the Mitten website, and four bid proposals were received. You have a copy of those, that bid tabbed. The low bidder, Trademark Lawn and Landscape, did come out and meet with administration. Certainly, the owner did indicate that he was able to do the work. He is local, or has some of his equipment stored local here. One thing that we did feel is important, at least make council aware, he did provide three references to us. Only one, we were able to hold of. The other two, we were not. The one that we got ahold of was not twenty-four hour, so it just made us kind of wonder on that. Certainly, he came out, the other bidder was right there in the same neighborhood. I think the low bidder took two dollars off of every unit price and submitted the bid. But again, the one reference that we really wanted to talk to, which was, he did some twenty-four-hour gas stations last year, we were not able to get ahold of.
Okay.
So I apologize for not having a better black and white or cut and, you know, cut and dry motion for you. There are two motions depending on what your comfort level is with what we found in our reference checks.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion toward 2018-2019 winter maintenance contract to Tommy's Lawn Service with expenses charged to line item one-zero-one-two-six-four-eight-one-eight dot zero-zero-three, contractual services building and grounds general fund.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I looked at this quite a bit, and based on the comments that we just heard from the city manager, I do have some concerns there with the reference as well. I think in our case, the best reference is the experience that we've had with Tommy's for the last year, which looks very good, and I think the chief, there hasn't been any issues at all with them.
Very nice surprise compared to the year before that.
Okay. And the overall price difference is a hundred-and-ninety, or a hundred-and-ninety dollars per year. Also with the addition that Tommy's would go with a, two one-year contract extensions, I think is very good, we can keep the price the same, have the history with them. Relationship has already been built, the experience, and due to the importance of what we're asking to the snowplow or the snow, the winter maintenance work to be done at our police station, based on that, I don't feel comfortable myself going with a new contractor, even though I'd like, it looks like this trademark is a relatively new company, which is great, they're getting up and going. But again, with the importance of what we're asking to be done, I don't want us to be kind of somebody to help build their clientele until they've proven themselves, and we've had lack of getting the references as well. So I just felt, and then we, and also in the background brief, we saw that, not with Trademark because we haven't used them before, but there's been some challenges with some of the previous contractors. We haven't had any issues with Tommy's, so I feel comfortable and would only support this motion. I would not support giving it to Trademark.
Any other comments? I think for the same reason I would agree with you, Mike, it's not time to test the waters for a new contractor when we don't have those backgrounds. The amount of money is very, very tiny, very, very tiny, and being we are a twenty-four-seven operation over here with our police department, we can't afford to not have excellent service. Chief says we have excellent service. We're talking penny, literally a few bucks for the entire year. I agree with Mike that this is the best way to go. And you also are changing this. Would that remain the same, that it would be a one-year contract with two-year renewals?
Yep, it gives the city the option on the two-year renewal. We kind of looked at that last year, I think there were some council comments about some of our contracts, looking to see if we can kind of do some where it gives us the option, so.
And Tommy's already cuts our grass, and he has another?
He just, I think, yes, we were just.
We have another year with him?
Correct.
On the cutting of the grass, so.
This, he just, he agreed, because his performance was exceptional, that we wanted to extend it a year, and he agreed to hold his prices, and we actually have another year if we so desire at the end of the next season.
Okay. Sounds to me like it's smart business. Any other comments? Anything else, anybody? Back to the table. Is there a motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. The final item is consideration of across-the-road banners. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider two requests we've received for across-the-road banners. Banner number one is from the Richmond Girls Fast Pitch Association. This banner is in your packet and came with a special event request. Their registration event is this coming weekend. They have gone through new business, but they came out, met with us, were very comfortable with the work they're going to do, and actually, they dropped off the banner tonight, so DPW will put it up for them tomorrow morning, should this be approved tonight. They understood that when they submitted that their contractor was going to get the banner to us today, and if approved tonight, it would be up for just a short period this year, and then they look to utilize it longer in the future. And then the second banner is one that was discussed at our Tifa, at last week's Tifa meeting, or maybe week before, for a banner for the Santa Parade and community tree lighting.
Thank you. Okay, we have the first motion for the RGFA. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special event application from RGFA to have an across-the-road banner in conjunction with their registration event to be displayed November sixth through November fifteenth, or November twelve.
Support.
It's been made and supported. Any discussion on that one?
So the banner is made, so if they use it next year?
Well, it'll only be for one week, I think.
Yeah, they only put it up for one week, so.
One week.
That's why there's no dates or anything on it.
Okay, well, because it just says registration this weekend, so if it's just, okay.
Yeah, they'll put it up.
Like today.
Like, yeah, you know.
Okay.
Hopefully, next year it'll be earlier, you know, realizing that they have a banner and we have the poles.
And they can go up on Monday then?
They can go up on Monday, yeah.
Perfect. That's, okay. Great.
Thought it was kind of funny when you looked at it, there's no date, there's no telephone number, but they do have, you know, rgfa.com or whatever, that would be called for Facebook. Anything else? Audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have another motion for the banner request. I would first ask council, in your motion, if you would indicate which banner. There, the one has, does not say Richmond on it, the other one does, of course, say Richmond on it. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the banner request from the City of Richmond EDC to have an across-the-road banner in conjunction with the community tree lighting and Santa Parade to be displayed November twenty-sixth through December tenth. The banner will include the word Richmond.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion?
That's going to affect the across-the-road decoration?
Yes, my thought is that normally we put that up right around when we do the Christmas decorations. I think last year we had to have Johnny kind of change it. This would go up on November twenty-sixth through the tree lighting, and then we'll have DPW with their new boom lift take the banner down and put the Christmas decoration up.
In other words, we don't have to do it.
Yes.
That's all good.
Actually, that was kind of my plan, even if we, to be honest, even if we didn't have the banner, hey, somebody else is going to be doing that. It's just too hard to coordinate with the, with the sky tracks and everything that day. I thought with our new lift, it's a little bit easier. They're getting very proficient with it, so.
That's great, great.
Thanks, Joe.
I'm glad you included Richmond in that. People drive through town, they don't necessarily know what town they're driving through when they're going north or, you know, whatever. I, when I go through towns, sometimes I don't know which town I'm, some of those smaller towns especially, you don't know what town you're in, and, oh, wow, I'm in, you know, whatever it may be. So I'm glad you added that to your motion, Mike. Anything else? So I'm glad you added that to your motion, Mike. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I felt the same way. It's kind of nice. It gives you that kind of a warm and fuzzy, hey, Richmond's home for the holiday, as opposed to come home for the holiday.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anything else? I'm glad we're doing it too, by the way. Appreciate what TIFA is funding it and the EDC's committee got it together and along with Shop Richmond, an organization that is working together to do positive things in the business district. And this is a great start. It's a great start. It's good to see everybody working together on this, so. Any other comments? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. That concludes our items for consideration. City manager's comments, sir?
I'd just like to thank all the department directors that came out tonight and support and was ready to answer any questions you may have had on their items. So always appreciate them coming out. As you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, there's a whole group with the EDC and TIFA, their involvement in the Shop Richmond group. And you'll be seeing a lot of different events surrounding that tree lighting coming out very shortly. So keep your eyes out for some of those things. I think we're going to try and really kind of step up that community tree lighting and Santa Parade this year. So working within, in the festival who runs the Santa Parade. I know Giddle Days is working to kind of get more people involved in that. So just appreciate everyone's efforts this year to try and make that event a little bit bigger for everyone involved. And that's all I have tonight.
Very good. We go on to council comments. Michael, I'm going to start with you tonight.
Actually, nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, Dennis?
I just wanted to congratulate the staff on a great job. I'm sure you're going to elaborate at the end, so I'll let you do that, so.
Jamie?
Same thing.
Emily?
I concur.
John?
I concur.
Get out and vote tomorrow.
You bet, absolutely. I hope everybody gets out and votes. It's going to be very, very important for our local community as well with the school board issues, or not issue, but school board election and write-in campaign that's been going on. Yeah, Dennis, you know, I mean, again, it's a, this kind of marks another year with the audit and tells us, you know, where we are. There's a hard line, I guess, on exactly where we are. And it's, it's great that we have the staff that we have. And, you know, I think about the liabilities, you know, we all would love to give our employees a bigger and better retirement, but we can't afford it, you know, we just can't afford that. We do the best we can with what we have and the money that comes in. So when they talk about that, yes, we have a healthy fund balance, but it could be gone very, very quickly if we had to get into some of the long-term responsibilities of retirements. So I still think we do the best we can in all areas. And we have a healthy fund balance, as I said, yeah, we've been watching our dimes and nickels for many, many years now. And you guys have, and your staff has always been able to work with us. You understand where we're coming from over the many years we've been here. Got a great addition to your staff with Angel here and everybody. It just seems as though we're really clicking well. And the audit is, I think, one of those, one of those measurements of the heartbeat of the community. And so we're doing great.
Thank you.
And hats off to your staff and the city council. You guys put a lot of time into this every year. We don't take our responsibilities lightly. I believe we know what we're doing. And again, that is shown when it comes down to the numbers. We're doing a lot with what we have and still have a little just in case something goes wrong. So again, you know, appreciate everything that's been done. So let's go to the calendar, today being November fifth, of course, Election Day. Tomorrow, seven AM to eight AM at the Community Center on Festival Drive. Get out and vote. It's very, very important. Planning Commission on the eighth Thursday night, right here, seven o'clock. We will be going over the new subdivision plan on that evening. And then, of course, Veterans Day is being celebrated on the twelfth. And there is a library board meeting also on the twelfth at seven o'clock at the library. But hats off to our veterans. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't for them and the sacrifices that they have made for many, many, many years. The thirteenth, the seven o'clock, the Cable Commission will be meeting here at City Hall. And on the fifteenth, the EDC will be meeting at seven o'clock here at City Hall also. Two weeks from tonight, on the nineteenth, will be the next regular scheduled city council meeting. Want to make a note here that the Parks and Recreation Department will be holding their annual senior social at Monty Archie's Banquet Hall at two o'clock on the eighteenth. I have not heard that that's sold out yet.
Last I heard, it is not.
Okay, so seven two seven, three zero six four is the Parks and Recreation Department. You can call there and get tickets for that senior social. It's always a good time. We want to make note on the city calendar, November twenty-seventh is the scheduled last day of yard waste. So it looks like the weather has knocked down most all the leaves the last, this past week. Went awful fast. All the rain and the wind we've got. So the last day officially is the twenty-seventh of November to put out your yard waste. Is there anything else that we need to mention? I'm sorry, there is one more advertisement here from the Parks and Recreation Department, the annual hall walking for health at Richmond Middle School, Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays from six to eight. Started November first, it runs through into late March. And there is a drop in fee of one dollar per evening. And you can get a discount punch card. You can get, let's see, twelve dollars for fifteen punches. And there's a simple registration, waiver and emergency contact, ten years old and older. All children must be supervised by an adult. And that would again is contact there is Richmond Recreation Department at seven two seven, three zero six four. Or you can show up at the middle school from six to eight PM for the walking. Something I should probably get involved in. Okay, is there anything, any other business of the city council this evening? Be you not, motion to adjourn will be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? One more thing we want to add is congratulations on your thirtieth anniversary day, Mike.
Thank you very much.
With that, we adjourn our meeting.